Good evening, Hank and Maggie. Welcome to March 12th for our nation's meeting. Tonight is a very exciting night with many awards and presentations. This is the home of March is turning out to be our pack. There are a lot of exciting students here waiting impatiently for our wonderful award to receive. So I like the call to speak important as we stand for the pleasure of it.
United States of America, through your power, through your stance, on mission, for your God, in his will, in their duty, and justice for all.
Please help the access to mind you and have your own statement. If we all agree, I might make a motion for the approval of whatever we attend. Second, all those in favor? Aye. Motion approved, call to adjourn.
We have a question and what information does this mean to the government of 2024?
Any motion?
Motion.
Second?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion access, hold the moment. Students who recognize wish to address the board of education, our attorney. Now comes a one more. We'll begin this evening with the students of the month for December, January, and February. So we begin with Mr. Meyer from the elementary school.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Big night tonight, a lot of great students introduced. First, I'd ask Mr. Sino, Mr. Towers, and Mr. Robro. Alright, so again, Scarlett, December student of the month. I'd like to welcome up Logan Tapia. Logan, come on up. That's what you call a sharp dressed man. Alright, Logan is a smart, hardworking, and enthusiastic guy. He loves to learn new things and always wants to be challenged. He is also a caring friend and classmate. It's normal for Logan to go out of his way to help others. At the end of the day, Logan helps friends pack up, zip their coats, and tie their shoes. Logan chose to student of the month because he excels academically. He is always looking for a new challenge. He is self-motivated, confident, and independent and observant. When it comes to learning new information, Logan is a sponge. When asked what the coolest thing he has learned so far was, he stated it was that glass was made out of melted sand. Logan's future is extremely bright. There is no doubt that this will be the first of many accomplishments for him. Where the last who have nominated for Logan to December student of the month, you deserve it. Congratulations, Logan. Okay, our January student of the month. I'd like to welcome up Isabella Taylor. Isabella. Bella is an absolute pleasure to have in kindergarten. Her bawling personality and hostile spirit brings such joy to our classroom. Bella is respectful and kind girl. She's determined each and every day to complete her best schoolwork. She's always eager to learn new things and asks questions that allow her to gain an abundance of knowledge on a specific topic. When we asked Bella for her favorite part of school, her response was everything. Although she loves everything, she specifically likes playing math games because she enjoys the challenge. Her favorite thing to do is cook with her mom and learn from her amazing chef skills. It has been noted that while mainly Christmas cooking with her mom, she arranges the Hershey Kisses in groups of ten to practice her math skills. This is just another example of how eager Bella is to learn. It's an honor to have such a bright, determined, and happy student in our school. Her personality sparkles and lights up your day. Her smiling kindness is contagious. Where your great beyond crowd who have nominated Isabella Taylor for January student of the month is well deserved. Congratulations, Bella. Alright, moving on to February student of the month. I'd like to welcome up Amber Gutierrez. Say hello. Amber is an all-around amazing girl. She is smart, helpful, honest, caring, hard-working, funny, and talented. There is nothing Amber cannot do if she puts her mind to it. She can do it. She is always ready to take risks and is never afraid to make mistakes that she can learn from. Amber is an active participant in her learning and always strives for greatness. She's truly a lifelong learner. Outside of school, she enjoys playing soccer, gymnastics, spending time with her family, and playing with her little brother Ethan. Amber always displays kindness to all and is a great friend and classmate and a wonderful student. Amber is an absolute pleasure to have in class and is a true role model in every sense of the word of word. We're honored and proud to have Amber in fourth grade this year and look forward to hearing about all the amazing things we know she will accomplish in the future. Thank you for always being such a ray of sunshine and willing to work hard and learn. We're proud to have nominated Amber for February student of the month. There's no one who deserves it more. Congratulations, Amber.
Next up, we have Mr. Shug from middle school.
It's my pleasure to recognize three HDMs shining stars tonight. Daniella Roman, Maya Owen, and Iowa McMan. Please join me here at the podium. These are our students of the month for December, January, and February for Hampton Bay's Middle School. And what a fitting way to celebrate Women's History Month with the accomplishments of these three middle school leaders. How about a round of applause for these two guys? Daniella, who's in seventh grade, is a well-rounded adolescent. She's a voracious reader because it's an easy escape to another world. Books are probably my favorite thing ever, she told me. She loves math when it's loose, plays soccer, and looks forward to track or lacrosse in the spring. Daniella performs in both jazz dance and harmonizers. She aspires to someday work as a traveling reporter or in a field that helps people or animals, which line up perfectly with Renadion Strait's report. Daniella's words of wisdom for younger middle school students: Stay true to yourself. Maya, a sixth grader, shared her favorite club activity this year so far. It's been playing games and doing service activities with friends in Kiwanis Builders Club, especially holiday cards for our friends at the senior center. Maya's Navion's report tells us she exhibits straights in the social realm which supports her goal to become a fifth-grade math teacher inspired by her fifth-grade math teacher, Mrs. Reynolds, who said she always made working with numbers fun for students. Maya's words of wisdom for any new middle schooler: Focus on becoming the best version of yourself. Last but certainly not least, I'd like to introduce fifth-grader Iowa McMan. Iowa will be onstage this weekend in the HDMS production of Beauty and the Beast where she will be showcased as a member of the ensemble. When not onstage acting, Iowa can be found onstage dancing, which is done since the age of two, or on the softball field pitching, which is done since second grade. Iowa is another math superstar, particularly fond of converting fractions to mixed numbers. Also with this is recognition. Iowa is widely known by her teachers and classmates as someone who is empathetic, helpful, and a role model both in and out of school. Iowa, Maya, I'm sorry, Iowa, Maya, and Daniella are three shiny stars, each with a bright future both in middle school, high school, and beyond. Congratulations to each of you. The best is yet to come for your HDMs. Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Shug, and congratulations to the students. Next up, we have Mike Morgan.
Yeah, we're splitting the roles. Mr. Char, I got it. Splitting the teams here. My pleasure to introduce the December student of the month for Hampton Bay's High School, Daniel Harneado, our student. Come on. Daniel was nominated by the math department because of his effort and performance in his classes. He entered the district two years ago for singing and it's really impressed his teachers. Miss Ilo, one of Daniel's managers said Daniel is this wonderful, respectful, and hard-working young man. His work and his work ethic are both unmatched. It is a true pleasure having him as a student. Daniel says man forces a cheer of talking soon with an actual. Daniel mentioned that he faced any challenges as a sophomore without found appropriate activities to develop to be very thoughtful leading the people. As a member of the talking club, Daniel is looking forward to adding photos to our hardship this year. He enjoys adding photos, but says that's part of the club. It's not developing photos, but developing friendships. Daniel was also a member of the rugby team and the tennis team. Unfortunately, he missed the entire tennis season last year due to a road nurse. All of a sudden, he would not be able to play. He still went to every single game. He wanted to cheer on his teammates and support them in their matches. To me, that is the ultimate definition of team play. Daniel is looking forward to a season which just started this week. I'd say breakaway, but I don't want to say anything. Outside my school, Daniel stays busy by working at Hampton Bay. I mean, he's looking forward to the finish of the senior year at Hampton Bay's High School. Already applied to set up to many colleges such as Supert College and LA where he plans on major changes. Once again, let's hear it for him.
Next up, we have Mr. Rajar.
Hey, it was always a lovely enthusiasm. Congratulations. I'd like to present the high school student of the month for the month of January, Emily Robinson. Emily, come on up. Alright, so I'm going to keep my speech for Emily somewhat short because we're going to be meeting Emily next month when we present her to the Board of Education and the community as a valedictorian of her class. However, on the month of January, it belonged to the science department, and the science department would not allow Emily to graduate without receiving this recognition with being their term. And there's a lot of reasons for that. Emily has been enrolled in the science research firm for the past four years and is studying about socioeconomic status and its effect on dementia. And she's done some pretty substantial work in this area. She is a member of the Science National Honor Society, the National Honor Society, and has always been a leader in her science classes. She's currently taking AP Physics, is taking AP Chemistry, and she plans to study science in college. Now, here's the best part. Emily has been accepted to the YSL program, brilliant in science and engineering, part of some university which is a very elite program. Again, I'm not going to talk too much because we're going to talk about the nine colleges that have accepted and we fight over Emily Robinson and her future. But for now, we're going to say congratulations on doing everything right during your time here in high school and making that all acceptable. Congratulations. This time, I'd like to invite a special guest speaker for the student of the month for the month. Pedro Mr. Ferraro. Who is our next student of the month, Victoria Madison's favorite school year? Come on, alright.
Thank you very much. Now, normally I don't do this. Working in district office, I don't have as much interaction with students as I once had as before in this high school. However, in case of Victoria, I think if you were to look at my calendar, her name would go ahead and more than any other allegations in this issue for the next six months. I think I've edited, re-edited, and re-edited every resume, college application, scholarship application, employment application, mortgage application, and I think that Victoria has put pen to paper or keyboard to a computer screen. I'm honored to recognize Victoria as our student of the month for that word. Victoria is a brilliant and determined student on track to graduating a year early with a challenging course load including a self-study in AP Macroeconomics and AP Microeconomics. Victoria's third in her class and she's only been here for three years in high school. That's pretty important to me. If you're keeping score like I am, since the summer, Victoria has challenged seventeen college-level courses, not credits, courses, between her daytime caseload, what she's done this summer, what she does at night in her free time. Excuse me. She is also the CEO of Vee, her joint enterprise. She is the president of the FBLA. She is a litigator for mock trial, and she has excelled showcasing her strong public speaking skills and her advocacy work. Right third in her class, Victoria's academic achievements are destined for far beyond hand-to-bids. Her ambitions extend to competitive colleges such as Yale, Princeton, Harvard, Dartford, Columbia, Harvard, and NYU, to give a few. She's aiming for a career in law or business or both. Victoria embodies hard work, leadership, and determination at Hampton Bay's High School, and she wears great props. Congratulations, Victoria Madison.
Once again, congratulations for all the students of the month. Okay, up next, we have Mr. Rajar in Mesquite City presenting the Science National Honor Society.
Alright, so back in the fall, we had our annual National Science Honor Society induction ceremony, and unfortunately, one of our very best science students, Christopher Olden, was unable to join us. So we've asked Mr. Clumson and the Board of Education to indulge us for a minute as we recognize a very bright young man with a very bright future ahead. Christopher Olden, why don't you come on down? So practice certificate here for you, okay? In recognition of the outstanding work you've done for science and meeting all of that criteria. I'm going to ask this to see just be very briefly about what it means to be inducted into the Science National Honor Society and what Chris had to do to get there.
I'm not used to this, but Chris is one of our best science students here. Currently, he is an AP for this and he is a summer student there. He's got a lot of his education. It's personal to me. But that's just one of the components that make him a great candidate for our society. He has scored eighty-five or better on all of his regions of science and science, and he has taken also APs and went into this subject area. He's also a proud member of our science research team and will be presenting against many adult science committees. He started working with his mentor, he's got the last, so he's doing a lot of hard work and is an excellent role model for our science students.
Alright, Chris, congratulations. You have good work.
And Mr. Shug, we're now going, excuse me, present the Veterans of Foreign Wars recognition.
Well, again, it's my pleasure to recognize several students from the middle school this evening. Each year, we partner with our local veterans organization, Post 5350, American Legion, and they issue our first homework assignment of the year, which I'm very excited to receive in July. It's the first email I sent to teachers in advance of a new school year to say the essay is here, the topic is here, and we're always excited to see what it is. This year is what inspires, excuse me, one second. I just wrote it down because I had to check it. How are you inspired by America? I wanted to get that right. How are you inspired by America? And our social studies teachers in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade issue it to the students, and generally speaking, we have them write essays and we submit, proudly submit to the Veterans of Foreign Wars hundreds of candidates for a pre-essence. The teachers take it very seriously, the students take it very seriously, and it really is a sense, a way for them to wrap their heads around what does this mean? Let me pause and think about that for a moment. We celebrate by recognizing several students this evening. We always seem to show up with winners every year. Not present this evening, however, finishing in first place in Southern County was Brian Strage. I'd also like to invite up this evening from Hampton Bay's Middle School of following three students, Willian Schulteis, Brian Allen, and Jeremiah Burke. So representing Hampton Bay's Middle School of the school tonight is Jeremiah Burke. Congratulations, Jeremiah.
Okay, I'm pretty sure that the three students being honored for their participation in the Voice of Democracy essay-writing competition are listening to homework this evening.
Okay, I'm pretty sure that the three students being honored for their participation in the Voice of Democracy essay writing competition are those who have homework this evening. We did have a third place winner in South County, Olivia Allen, and had the opportunity to see a high school production of recent this weekend. She played Wizzo and did a fantastic job. So congratulations to those students. I do have one non-student here that we're going to be recognizing from the professions of foreign wars as well. I'd like to invite Rachel Kelch to come on down. So Mrs. Kelch was honored by the PSW Post 5350 as teacher of the year. And I could not think of anyone more deserving of this honor. And when I think of Rachel, I often think of a teacher's teacher, but actually, she's more of a principal's teacher. I call Rachel all the time. Maybe it's because I have a tech deficiency, I don't know, but Rachel is the Zen master of all things Google and Google Classroom. And I spent the better part of the last few years calling Rachel, asking for her help and for her to teach me all the things that maybe I'm not so great at. And she's outstanding at that, and she's incredibly patient, I know, because I'm a hot mess with tech. But I know she does the very same thing for her colleagues. And whenever a colleague has a question or a colleague needs help or there's an opportunity for a teacher to teach you how to teach, Rachel is there. She's a master teacher in the classroom, and the reason obviously we think that she's so deserving of this honor is because one of the things that she teaches so passionately is civic responsibility, community service or responsibility to your community, which is part of what she does, both in United States history, government, government economics, working with seniors. And I believe that every student that has the privilege of being in Mrs. Kelch's classroom has had a very unique experience, something that probably not given in any other places in the world out there. So congratulations. I know the PSW is very proud to present you, but as a principal and colleague, even more so here. Congratulations.
Okay, congratulations once again to the students. Next up, excuse me, we have Liz McDowell, and this is the presenting of Fire Prevention Contest Winners for kindergarten, all ways away from A-3. Please come up. And we also have representative of the Fire Department here.
I can't believe we're finally doing this. This contest was held last fall, and weather interfered several times with handing out these awards. And also this evening, our middle school play rehearsal is interfering with a few of our students not being able to be here, but we will still honor them. The Hampton Bay's Fire Department is committed not only to putting out fires in our community, but also preventing them all together. National Fire Prevention Week in 2023, focus on keeping safety starts with you. Thanks to the generous support of the Hampton Bay's Fire Department, district students in kindergarten through grade eight, sorry, grade six, received instruction in the prevention of burns and fires in their homes, and they were invited to participate in a poster contest. Students in grades seven and eight received instruction in their PLA classes and were invited to participate in an essay contest. Three contest winners were selected from each grade level. In addition to award certificates, medallions, and/or trophies, each winner will be awarded a $25 gift certificate to the Hampton Bay's Booster Club. Before I present the winners, I would like to thank Seamus McGardle, Mike Soder, Captain John Stanton, and Chief Rick Neidiger along, I'm sorry, and also Joe Hernandez, who is with us this evening, and the entire Hampton Bay's Fire Department for their commitment and support in this community. Homes and businesses in our community are safer for it. When the students come forward to receive their awards, if they would wait at the far end of the table because we'll be taking a booth photograph at the end. I'll start with my eighth grade students, and this student is unable to be here this evening, but the third place winner in eighth grade was Alora Asher. The second place winner in eighth grade is Abigail Daniel. And our first place winner in eighth grade is Allison Garcia. In seventh grade, and these are two students who are busy at the play rehearsal right now. They will not be here this evening, but our third place winner is Fiona Hatt. The second place winner for seventh grade, also at play rehearsal, is Sophia Clinton. The first place winner for seventh grade is Allison Vera Dundee. And for our sixth grade students, our third place winner is Janelle Adia. And our second place winner is Mia Solda. The first place winner for sixth grade is Camilla Castro. And for fifth grade, our third place winner is Sophia Casada. The second place winner in fifth grade is Brooke McNamara. The first place winner for fifth grade is Kalen Abowers. Okay, now onto the elementary school. A lot of very talented dumb boys and girls in the elementary school. I'm always blown away by how great they are, how they do their work. Okay, so for fourth grade, we are for third place, we have Gia Estanza. Another third place winner for fourth grade is Maggie Zhang. Second place for fourth grade, we also have two winners, Annabelle Pardona and Debbie Carrera. And now moving on to first place for fourth grade, Isaac Cortez. Okay, moving on to third grade, our third place winner, Lulu Luthin. Second place for third grade, Ayla Landon Tyler. And first place for third grade is Kendra Torres Pulak. Now moving on to second grade, we have our third place, Angie Solis. For second place for second grade, we have Kathy Sanchez. And for first place for second grade, we have Shira Machenko. Now moving on to first grade, third place winner is Michael Garcia Alvarez. Second place winner is Edwin Hernandez Rojas. And first place for first grade is Matthew Gonzalez. And now we're on to kindergarten. Okay, for first place kindergarten, Alexa Sanchez. Second place winner for kindergarten, Matthew Noonan. And first place for kindergarten is Chantinella Alvarez.
Wow, congratulations to all the poster winners and essay winners from Florida Department. At this point, we will take a break so you can take pictures and mingle for a few minutes, and then we'll resume the meeting. Thank you all for coming. It was a wonderful evening. Okay, next up, we have Mr. Lawrence Clendenison's report.
The moment everyone appears been waiting for. The moment Diane has been waiting for. Okay, uh, good evening. And to those watching at home, good evening as well. Please take a look, uh, members of us in your packet tonight. Uh, this is a snapshot of enrollment at, um, on March 11th, yesterday evening. Um, you can see that, uh, we didn't do February because, um, of the weather, but you can see, um, this projected decline in enrollment that we have been projecting and are still projecting. It's happening slightly over time, but not really in real time. So what I mean when I say that is that as we graduate big classes and have smaller classes at the front of the pipeline, uh, that's where we'll start to see the downward, uh, decline in enrollment. But you can see day to day, it's not immediately materializing. So, um, it is in no way a, um, market shift where there's any staff concerns or anything like that, or capacity concerns with plenty of capacity. But you can see that over the course of January to March, we have had in almost every grade, um, an increase in enrollment. Now, when you spread that out over seven sections across the grade, some classes didn't see any increase, others saw, some others saw maybe one, uh, one child in that time. So, um, you can see when you look by building that we're up, uh, 39 students across the 13 grades of the school district. So again, divide that, it doesn't always work out evenly, but divide that across 13 grades and it's 30 students per grade. So, um, in terms of numbers, these are negligible numbers in terms of where our enrollment is. Um, glad to welcome little kids to, little new being in to the school district. So, um, this is always the foundation for our budget work. How many kids we get to serve, how many kids we get to serve now, and that we get to serve in the future. Uh, so we look at that, um, both historically and projectively, um, into the future, um, as we prepare for our budget work. So that's where I'm going to spend some time talking tonight. We're moving towards the budget acceptance, the budget proposed acceptance. We will present a budget, um, this, the administration will present a budget to the board for final approval, um, in April, which will then go to voters in May. So you can see 2010 to 2024, 25, where we're projected. Last area were declining. So you remember that era where we were, when we were adding staff to the budget, it was to add a classroom. It wasn't to add electives necessarily. We've come down over time, but we have not come down to the degree that the rest of Suffolk County has, which is, which was covered in Newsday a few weeks ago related to the governor's budget proposal, where we saw almost half of all school districts in Suffolk County received a cut in state aid for the first time in generations, a cut in state aid. There's always been a minimal increase or what's called safe harmless, which is that the district, if they're fully funded by the foundation formula, uh, that there's no cut, that they are, that they receive a minimum increase, uh, based on what the, that contrary to what the formula might generate. For Hampton Bays, because we have grown even by one, the formula generated a, a net for us in increase. So we see that in the governor's proposal. We would expect to see that in the final proposal as well. But as you look at the projected, and what does not adjusted mean? Not adjusted means I simply took the number of kids in every grade and just pretended not one moved out and another moved in. I just carried them through. It's much more technical, actuarial when you look at transient rates per grade level. Kids coming after O L H, after 8th grade to 9th grade, uh, kids leaving to go to a parochial high school, for example, um, overaged kids who are older, but maybe immigrating to this country. Um, that I didn't adjust for any of that. That's a much more technical approach where we bring in statisticians to do that. We don't do that every single year, but doing this has, has kept us in the right lane, um, and, and has been fairly spot on. So you can see I, I use the analogy of a, a ski slope. You can see it does come down a little bit, but when you look at the scale of that graph, it's 2040 or so right now, and in the next five years, maybe 1800. That brings us back to about 2008, 2009 enrollment size. And, uh, and I continue to just say this because the questions that the community, that the board will ask and the community will consider and the school district will consider is what happens when our district sizes in that direction? Are there new opportunities we want to offer kids in terms of a competitive, more competitive course schedule? Other ways to reinvest that into the school district? And also to mitigate, um, the taxpayer lift? Uh, so you've been able to do all of those things in the last 10 years. We'll continue to keep that at the top of the page to do in the next, um, at least next five. You know, the, these are fairly five years out is, that's more of an tangible projection because we know how many babies were born. And so that's what the statisticians look at. How many babies are born in a calendar year? Five years later, about 80% of them materializes kindergarteners. You can see the elementary school is, lives in this stratosphere now between 600 and 700 students. That, that is not a big shift. So in terms of adding classrooms, decreasing classrooms, uh, I imagine we'll be in the 120 to 140 range across the elementary, uh, the grade levels in the elementary school. It's a nice plateau to be at. It's a robust school, it's diverse, there's still plenty to offer and some, uh, unique elements of the, the master schedule. When you look at the middle school, you start to see it, it bumps a little bit, but it trends downwards as we approach 2030. Uh, and what that means for us again is those questions about what do we want to do as there are more, uh, as there's more space in the building, less students? What are the implications of that? Are the questions we'll need to ask ourselves each year? High school is a little bit more of a blue diamond ski slope. It's a little bit, um, a little bit steeper as we come down, uh, as we're graduating those 200 size classes and introducing 140, 150, 160 size classes. We write size, um, and become a smaller high school than we are today. That's not for next year. Next year is, um, next year you can see, um, 23 to 24 and 24 to 20, 24, 25. It's a relatively maintenance year that we are facing. And that, we use that word maintenance because we're maintaining the investments that we made. That's what our goal is in this budget proposal. The landscape's going to look generally the same for 24, 25. Therefore, it becomes a maintenance type budget with a few comments. As we look at, um, what our projected budget increase is this year, and, uh, we're looking at a 2.3% proposed spending increase on how much we spend between this year and next year, 2.3. When you look back over the years, back to 2010, 2011, the average budget to budget spending increase, increase has been 2.9%, 2.88. So we're at 2.3 this year. We're coming in under the average of where we've been. Why is that big tall skyscraper of a purple line, 2023, 24? What is that? Good question. Uh, that is the considerable increase in foundation aid that we've got. So that was a 30% increase in state aid. You remember we had less than a 1% tax levy increase last year. The two previous years, we had 0% tax levy increases. We received a, a promise that was long deferred and not fulfilled in the full funding, full funding of the foundation aid, full funding of foundation aid. Um, that was a considerable amount of investment. We have said that every dollar that comes from New York State, you know, Albany, is one we don't have to spend, uh, from the property taxpayers. We were able to do that. We invested significantly in the school district, but we also mitigated the tax rate by having two zeros and a 0.8% tax levy increase. So if you look at the slide that shows the breakdown of the federal, state and local shares, you can see that illustrated here before you with the different shades of purple. I bounced a couple of slides, I'll go back. But you can see that in 2010, 88% of the budget was funded by us locally as property taxpayers. Today, the 2024, 25 school budget, 75 cents on the dollar, is funded by the property taxpayer with the balance coming in federal and state shares. State is state aid, federal is federal grants. And so that's a result of advocacy, that's a result of the legislature's commitment to fully funding foundation aid, and we want to keep it that way. The tax levy increase would be proposed at an under the tax cap increase this year of 2.2%. Uh, that is, uh, the average going back to 2010, 2011 is 2.14%. You can see that the tax levy, the tax cap that came into effect in 2012, 13 school year, you can see that that had a course correction in New York State. Uh, and the tax levy has been about 2% um, every year since. The Board of Education has invested significantly in managing that tax levy increase uh, to recognize, um, to recognize both the commitment the local property taxpayer is making and making sure that we can invest in the school district. So the governor's proposal in January, uh, was a budget that we hadn't seen in, uh, some cases ever, um, in terms of school district getting state aid projected cuts, but also one that we haven't seen in four years, where the governor's number in January is a starting number, and then we all go to Albany and we make the case and we talk to our elected officials who advocate for us, and we, uh, that results in a final budget where the education investment is then higher than what it was in January. During COVID and after that, with the commitment to fully fund foundation aid, the number in January ended up being the number in April. And so we knew, and it was a much different experience in terms of planning the budget. Larry's test with making a budget that is based on an initial investment in foundation aid. I don't expect that in the final budget, we will see much more because half the districts were cut. I think the legislature's priority is going to be to restore those cuts first, and then if there's anything left, then that can be considered. But we have gone into this budget propos, this budget cycle with the expectation and understanding and acceptance that we shouldn't expect another dollar. And so we've been, um, conservative in, in that respect. The governor's proposed budget increases education funding by $800 million. 500 of that is foundation aid. Last year by comparison, it was over, almost $2 billion, 2. something billion dollars. So the increase in education, we expected this. COVID money ended, the federal government's flow of money to the state ended as well. But that proposal to amend foundation aid, which I mentioned, was in there and it was shocking. Uh, because Hampton Bays has grown in enrollment, the foundation aid formula generated an increase for us, but many of our colleagues were in a different situation. So as I mentioned, our allowable tax levy cap is 2.26. We're six hundredths of a percent lower than that, so we're proposing likely a 2.2% tax levy increase for spending increase within the tax cap of 2.3%. The legislative priorities that we have that are related to both, and I say we, and that's New York State School Boards, and SO Suffolk School Boards, Council of School Superintendent, Suffolk County School Superintendent Association. The legislative priorities are both fiscal and, um, not fiscal as well. So that includes some structural changes that would support school safety and mental health investments across the state. So that would those proposals that at this point, we don't think will immediately go anywhere, but we do keep them on the page. Exemptions to the tax levy limit if a district and a community want to invest more heavily in school safety and school mental health. But that would not be something that would be calculated against you and capped. What that does is it plays communities against one another, who, communities that can afford through a higher tax levy increase or those that get more state aid to have that mechanism to, to maybe get more social workers or counselors. Districts that are more hamstrung by the tax gap would not be able to do that. So the exemption would give that, um, again, the community has the ultimate say, but it would give the community the ability to do that. Long-term sustainability is critical. You try to plan your, uh, life that way as individuals, we all try to do that. We need to do that as a school district as well. So some, the whittle ash of getting a lot of foundation aid and then getting less of an increase, or getting more foundation aid and then the next year getting a foundation aid cut. The message to all of you is that, that can't happen. For a district that's, a district like Hampton Bay is that is 20% reliant on student, on state aid, we can't find ourselves in a position where that money goes away or significantly changes in the amount that we would get. 20% is a big piece of the budget. Some districts are less than 10%, 5% of their budget. A dollar is a dollar, that hurts. But when it's a bigger piece of your budget, we need more sustainability on that wheel of the wagon. Regulatory reform that is also important to us includes school calendar flexibility. I've talked about this over the last couple of months, that you have a September 1 start date and a June 30th end date. And the more days that we have off, um, as closures, you still have to meet your minimum requirements to get state aid and to meet the commissioner's regulations for how long kids are in school and our contractual obligations for staff recording days. And so when the walls don't change and more days are off, the pressure lands on the calendar. We're okay for next year, we adopted that last budget, but we are mindful that there are years that could be difficult. Civil service reform is always on the page to modernize and make more consistent, uh, dates for tasks and also how we canvass for new employees. Um, APPR adjustments as well to allow for local negotiation, uh, to look at teacher principal evaluation as not punitive measure, but one about growth and educator development and impact. The move to zero emission in school buses, um, the ask of the legislature is to slow that timeline down. The infrastructure in the grid is questionable around the state as whether or not or not a shift even in the next 10 years to 100% off the grid buses, or zero emission school buses, fully off the grid, if we could even manage that. The costs of buses are much higher. The infrastructure that would be needed in both bus yards and the school districts to manage that would also be challenging as well. So our budget goals in Hampton Bay include the following four North Stars essentially, if you have more than one North Star. But the four of them are to preserve the reserves, don't live off your savings account, maintain successful programs and the staff that's needed for those programs, live within or under the tax cap, and then maintain our house, tend to be infrastructure, so that we don't find ourselves playing catch-up in fixing facilities. We have looked at enrollment, worked with our program managers, looked at special education placements, the impact of our outgoing seniors and incoming kindergartners, and all the shifts within the buildings as we move, as kids move through the campuses. Larry makes sure that we are meeting all of our contractual obligations across our bargaining units. Our BOSI's commitments, benefit rates and pension projections have to be met, as well as a look at our co-curricular elective offerings. What still works? What is no longer in favor? What can we remove? What do we need to add? So that's the, those are the ingredients that go in to baking the cake of the budget. Couple of key drivers in this budget include employee benefit increases, special education program costs, staffing shortages, and economic conditions do drive us to look at third-party contractors, transportation, more niche type bilingual speech services, for example. We are not out of the hiring shortage and challenge just yet. And then we're also mindful that the years of COVID grants that we have enjoyed as a school district, those are ending. So decisions that we have been making strategically over the last four years, knowing that this would be a fiscal cliff, that that money once spent is gone. We've made decisions about things that were funded in the COVID grants, like enhanced after-school or tutoring hours, office hours, once we called them quarantine hours, thankfully no more. Those aren't necessarily needed to the degree they were, but there were some, there were some components that we added to the, to the program that were initially funded with the COVID grants, but we strategically planned to move them into the general fund. Last year, we moved some intervention teachers to catch kids up academically for learning loss, to provide short shots of additional support in a pullout model. That will maintain, we'll be able to maintain that. And then in this year's budget, we were able to thread in the social workers that we added as a result of the COVID, mental health recovery, social emotional support. So we have a very strong team of social workers as well. You can see here just a breakdown of the revenue analysis. A 2.2% increase in our tax levy, a 2.8% increase in our state aid results, all of that baked into the cake results in a 2.3% spending increase year to year. We are still line by line on this budget. We put in all the asks first, all the blue sky lists, and that number right now is higher than our tax cap budget. But our expectation is that next month we will have a budget proposal for you that is within the tax cap. We'll have a final state aid number. Wouldn't it be nice to see that number be a little bit higher? But if it's not, we have a strategic plan. We're just going, how many pencils do we need to do? What, what maintenance is a nice to have this year, we'll need to do it next year. We can defer that cost. But, but some of those immovable cemented big budget increases benefits, for example, pension costs, health insurance, special ed program assignments, some of those costs are just what they are. And so you have to put those in first and then work around what might be more discretionary over the next year. You'll see general support services, we have a 6% increase there. That central administration, staff, facility, safety, that number's going to come down a little bit because high, that's where we have a number of the capital project or the maintenance type projects. The ones that are less priority, nice to have, are going to be deferred to another year. So we're meeting with our facilities department to determine what those are. Instructional services, about 7.5% increase. That's the bread and butter of what we do, the biggest part of the budget. It is teaching and learning, right? That, it's the humans. Most of the humans are in that section of the budget. The teachers, the support staff, the counselors, the nurses, the counselors, all of them are there. And as I mentioned, it includes two additional social workers. And just to circle back, it also includes the inclusion of boys volleyball, middle school and JV, so we're going to try our hand at that and see if we can serve it up. Anyone? Is anyone there? So I'm going to show your way to me still. And for those watching at home, transportation and capital and benefits, about a 4% decrease. Why? Because in that line, in that section of the budget were the capital expenses that we smartly, I think, as a board, you said, this big foundation aid increase that we have, let's just make sure that in 2024, 25, things don't go haywire. They went haywire, right? The governor's budget was a little, a little unexpected. And so the fact that we did not bake those into recurring costs over the last three years was where we were able to say, that's the money that will handle increases in benefits, handle increases in special education, contractual requirements, the two social workers, for example. And so we were able to smartly use that money to where now it's in a recurring cycle, but we were able to handle the 1957 and 1968 bathroom renovation, toilet room renovations in the elementary school. They were dated when Mr. Jocelyn was teaching in that hallway, and that was, that was some time ago. And so changing the cow wall window, replacing those that have lost their effectiveness, opaque lighting at the elementary and middle school as well. Heading towards the budget, Tuesday, May 21st, from 7:00 to 9:00 in the middle school gym, two questions, author, three questions. Authorize a school budget for next year. Authorize up to $300,000 if there is up to $300,000 left in this year's budget. Could we do minor repair and renovation in the future? That has been a proposition for 18 years, Larry, 19 years. It's always been met positively by the community because it's a smart way to keep the roof in order when the sun is shining. And then two candidates are up for Board of Education. And materials will be more available for the budget as we get into April. We will have the budget available for the community to review at the end of April after it's finalized by the school board as well. Military valutables distributed on April 26th. We anticipate adopting the budget on April 16th, and then a budget hearing as traditionally done in the beginning of May. That leads right to the budget vote on May 21st. Just a couple of items to report in superintendent's report. The Beaman Financial Literacy Center was launched in February 29th. Thank you to everybody who was involved in that long project. It was a very exciting lead up to the starting line, as we called it. And we already have kids beginning to transact. Did we catch a couple of car notes being paid over the last couple weeks by some staff? Adults were up there transacting. Who knows what they were doing? It's confidential, remember? But we can, they were either depositing, withdrawing, or doing some other banking transactions. So grateful to teachers again for being our partner, grateful to a number of Art Jones Foundation, couple of other individuals who have committed, we have $3,000 committed for, to help seed new student accounts with $10 each. So it does a little bit better than the minimum balance, and it gets kids in the black and on the way to saving and being financially literate. Spring sports are underway. Someone mentioned that in the presentations tonight. Congrats to Scholar Athlete Teens, Boys and Girls Basketball Winner Competitive Cheer, and both of our Boys and Girls Track Teams. Eric mentioned it in his presentation tonight on Victoria, the CEO of VE, virtual enterprise. It's a business elective where kids actually create their own enterprise and they market it. They come up with the financing plan. They come up with the prototype product, and they are going to the city to compete against other VE teams. West Hampton has for a long time had a really stellar program. We've learned from them. Mr. Verdone has really gotten excited about this program, gotten our kids excited about this program. April 12th, we're headed to the national competition, which is at the Javits Center because Victoria's company has continued to win. So they're, they're going to compete at the national level. Thankfully, it's in New York City. We'll be able to bring the other VE students in there as well to cheer them on and support. But a super cool thing to go into the city and do that. Benchmark field trips that are ahead of us. Grade 11 goes to DC leaving Thursday at 5:30. Also Miss Fox's birthday. Grade 7 heads to Mystic, Connecticut in May. Frost Valley welcomes our eighth graders next week, and the music department at the beginning of April is going to Colonial Williamsburg. We are totally in the season of ceremonies, celebrations, and productions. Grease was just dropped today after a great weekend. You Heard Beauty and the Beast is next weekend. We have honor societies, science honor society, oh no, we did that one in the fall. Music honor societies, National Honor Society, science research symposium, concerts across the district, leading, raising towards the end of the school year. But I want to bring your attention to Monday, April 8th. Don't look up the solar eclipse, but look up with the proper protection. That is what we are telling our student, Ms. Fasini, who presented tonight with our science research, Chris Rolland, our science honor society student, Chris Rolland, has been working on this with Ms. Salwalt and a small committee for over a year. Ms. Fasini came to me and said, there's going to be a run on solar eclipse viewing glasses. We need to get on that. So I went to Uncle Larry's office down the hall and I said, I need some money to buy some solar eclipse viewing glasses. For when? For April 8th, 2024. And we did, we bought them in June, and thankfully we did because they're all backward now. And so every student and staff member will receive solar eclipse viewing glasses for April 8th. New York is in the path of totality. I was an English and social studies person, so this is all, I had to do a lot of Googling to be able to say these words, path of totality. But in the Rochester, central New York, upstate area, it is going to be fully dark, right, nighttime, which is really exciting. What I learned is people will travel from all over the world to get into this path of totality. Districts upstate are already talking about early release, remote days, because it becomes such a thing there. Streets are clogged, open spaces are clogged, which are traditionally school fields. We are in the 85 to 90% totality space. So how cool would it be to be down on the beach or on one of our fields? And it's going to get pretty dark here from 3:25 to 3:28. So, okay? Big point of, like, like right there. So we are going to send a letter home to parents. We have activities planned. Our student team has been working on age-appropriate lessons, so every student will be touched by this, but sometime between now and April 8th. Two things. One, what the solar eclipse is, why it's so cool that we're in the path of totality, how rare it is. The next time this happens in our region, our kindergartners will be 60 years old, and so, and none of us will be here. 20, you know, maybe, who knows? 2079 is the next time this is going to happen in this area. So this is one of those moments, as Mike had said, you're going to remember, they're going to tell the kids this, I was at school when this happened, or how cool was this? And so everyone will get a lesson on what this is, and then also a lesson on safety, not looking up, when you can look up, when you need your glasses on. And we're working with the buildings and our staff to figure out. Middle and high school already be dismissed, 209 and 230, 325. So we're going, we're going to put something together out here on the field for those who come back, where it could be the school community in here. The elementary school is right during dismissal. So we're figuring that part out, but we don't want kids to be on the bus while it's happening. We can't speed up the eclipse. So we're, we're working with that. But we are committed to making sure that this is a learning experience and one of those life moments that I had to do this at school with my teachers and learn about that. So I do have five viewing glasses for each of you, and I will make sure you have those before April 8th at 3:25 PM. Any questions on tonight's report? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry?
Just a couple of quick things. Mr. Jocelyn, back in January, we did an online auction of surplus items in our school district. The total bids we auctioned was $2,338.50. We sold items as opposed to having thrown away. And that, really more than the money earned, was the benefit is that we didn't have to pay the greatest stuff. It was, it was a win-win, if you will, on that one. Moody's came out with their annual comment on the school district. The comment was issued in summer, but it finally was published in February. There was no change for Moody's rating. We are still double A3. There is no change in the outlook. The outlook is stable. That kind of, it's kind of good and kind of bad. It means that Moody's doesn't see any changes coming either. We're not going to go up, we're not going to go out. They feel we're kind of in that stable place, and we're probably going to stay there. So that's about it, Mr. Jocelyn.
All right, thank you. Okay. I'm going to ask for a consent for 4A through 4D, a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Consent motion for 5A, students' services. Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent motion for personnel 6A through 6J. A motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And public comment. Persons may address the Board of Education on any matters of interest or concern. The board president will recognize. Well, speakers, time limits may be imposed based on agenda needs. At this point, I make a motion for adjournment. Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.